When I thought that you might save me in the dark side of the moon. We could be both when walking through the shadows and the clouds. And we never did stop talking, then you sent me up the river my way. I was made for sunny days. I may do it today, but I can't say I was made for sunny days. And I was made for you. Ooh. The night's gone long. Ooh. You're leaving your favorite place. Night's dark, but then day will rise. Ooh, it seems so deep. I'm still sleeping, sleepless, I don't know why. No, I am mine. Your winter jacket, but a baby wears around. And we're chasing through the springtime in the snow's drag on the ground. And every hour we're working and working play our bound. And every day is Sunday. Sun comes round, I say, oh. I was made for sunny days. I may do it today, but I can't say I was made for sunny days. And I was made for you. I was made for sunny days. I may do it today, but I can't say I was made for sunny days. And I was made for you. You want to know that? I was made for sunny days. And I was made for you.
Thank you, we are the Otzel Group in Cypress Lake Center for the Arts. And this next one, you may have heard on the radio recently called "Classic", kind of a Jackson 5 feel.
Hey, where's the drums?
Get up, diva da da. Get up, ba da ba da. Get up, diva da da. Pop, pop, get up, ah. Get up, diva da da. Like a fish out of New Zealand. They don't make you ice, you just do. You're never going out of style. Get up, diva da da. This world won't go crazy there. That way you save me, when I lost my life. I like shake my day to. I like to do my day to. I like to get down, get down, get down. With you like this, you're over my head, I'm out of my mind. Thinking I was born tonight. I'm one of a kind, I didn't know that. I'm so classy. Dum, 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 dum. Shake it, dum, dum, dum. Baby, you're so classy. I'm shaking you. Baby, you're so classy. Boy, nothing wrong with that. Everything for you, you know, yes. All the way to the relief. I'm about to get up, da da da. Pick you up and I can carry you like I can't wait. When you're down, I can get you in a real way. I can give you a spark, I can ride. I like my love. I like to do my day to. I like to get down, I can get you right off. With you like this, you're over my head, I'm out of my mind. Thinking I was born tonight. Love on rewind, everything's a throwback in. You're out of my league, old school sheep, like a movie star. I'm one of a kind, baby, you're so classy. I'm so classy. Baby, you're class, and baby, you're set. I never met a girl like you ever till we met. I started in the forty cent of boom, with the lunge. Got me drinking out like the sixties. If he's pulling up at the hotel, I'm just gonna take a drink and scream in an eighty vest. Have Beyonce, Marilyn, and Maddy go, you're timeless. Just so classy. You're over my head, I'm out of my mind. Thinking I was born tonight. Love on rewind, everything's a throwback in. You're out of my league, old school sheep, like a movie star. I'm one of a kind, baby, you're so classy. I'm so classy. Out of my mind, I think that you got another time. You're all mine. Yeah. Baby, you're so classy.
"Join the World". Uh, we're gonna do the holidays season. We thought we'd do one of our favorite Christmas carols for you. "Joy to the World". One, two, three, four. One, two.
Ba da ba. Jeremiah was a bullfrog. Ba da ba. Was a good friend of mine. Ba da ba. And I helped him drink his wine. And he always has a mighty fine voice. Joy to the world. All the boys and girls. Joy to the fishes in the deep blue sea. Joy to you and me. Ba da ba. In the world, the queen of the world. Ba da ba. Tell you what I do. Ba da ba. Oh, we're the parts and the part that ours. And makes me love to you. Joy to the world. Joy, all the boys and girls. Joy, joy, joy to the fishes in the deep blue sea. Joy to you and me. Ba da ba.
Oh, I love the ladies. Ba da ba. Love to have my folks.
Ba da ba, 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 da da da. You're a strange shoe, son of a gun.
I said a strange shoe.
Oh. Joy to the world. Joy, all the boys and girls. Joy, joy, joy to the fishes in the deep blue sea. Joy to you and me. Joy, joy to the world. Joy, all the boys and girls. Joy, joy, joy to the fishes in the deep blue sea. Joy to you and me. Joy, joy to the world. Joy, all the boys and girls. Joy, joy, joy to the fishes in the deep blue sea. Joy to you and me. We're singing. Joy to you and me.
We have recorded a few albums. A brand new one, "Sunny Days" is available. Uh, the song you're about to hear is on there. The very first one we sang is on there. Uh, it's on iTunes, or we have them, or we turned it off. Um, and, uh, they will help to put that program. So we'll do one more before the meeting gets called to order. And this is called "Wonder".
I can be the night. I'm not afraid of thunder. I am full of light. I am full of wonder. Whoa, whoa, whoa. I ain't falling under. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Hey, daddy, daddy. Hey, hey, hey. Don't start on those shoulders. Don't worry, we gon' break. Hey, hey, hey. Cause we are full of wonder. Whoa, whoa, whoa. We are falling under. Whoa, whoa, whoa. We are the wonder. This light, this can take you to go. Go, say, you need a shift. We're trying to pass it on. Ooh, yeah. This light, this can take you to go. Go, say, you need a shift. We're trying to pass it on. Ooh, yeah. This light, this can take you to go. Go, say, you need a shift. We're trying to pass it on. Ooh, yeah. This light, this can take you to go. Go, say, you need a shift. We're trying to pass it on. Whoa, whoa, whoa. We ain't falling under. Whoa, whoa, whoa. We are full of wonder. And that's how they just come. Don't start on the fire. Just rising along. This is the start of the covenant. Don't start on the thunder. Don't start on the thunder. Whoa, whoa, whoa. We ain't falling under. Whoa, whoa, whoa. We are full of wonder. We are full of wonder. This light, this can take you to go. Go, say, you need a shift. We're trying to pass it on. We are falling under. We are falling under. We are full of wonder.
And anybody who might be in the audience that would like to speak tonight, that has not filled out a blue card, you may do so at this time with Mr. Martin. If you've already turned one in, that's fine. If not, and you'd like to speak, please do so at this point in time. We thank you guys from Cypress Lake for entertaining us tonight, for doing a great job. Not only this evening, but in all the work that you do, and the preparation that you do in order to make it possible. So for each and every one of you, we express our thanks. And I think we ought to give them another round of applause. And since they like you, obviously, we're gonna ask you to stay around and do one more. But I first want to call this meeting of Lee County School Board to order. Meeting of December tenth, two thousand thirteen is now called to order. The time is six oh two PM. At this time, we request all cell phones and/or pagers be turned off or be put into silent mode. We also ask that you please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance, one recognition, one acknowledgement, public comment, consent action items, which include one under executive services, four under business and finance, six under operations, three under teaching and learning, nine superintendent's recommendations, one item under attorney's recommendations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Mrs. Fisher, support by Mrs. Morgan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose the like sign, the motion carries. We'll now turn the meeting back over to the chorus to sing their final selection for the evening.
Our last piece for you is entitled "Battle", and this is kind of a special piece for us. It's our very first original. Uh, it was written by the senior Gabrielle McCreed. She is also the lead solo. So this is a special piece. But it's a beautiful farmer by Gabrielle, and she's gonna sing it along with me. One, two, three, four.
We built a kingdom in my dreams. Where you were king and I was queen. That was all we'd ever known. And we were prisoners to our throes. Oh, the world is strange. Words upon a page. Fight the battle. We'll fight to the death until our lungs can hold no breath. Fight the battle. Get out of this place when we win the hard run race. But your eyes adjust to a brand-new light. Still lick our wounds though we've won the fight. Dizzy from the sheer places. We're wide-eyed kids in untried places. Oh, whoa, whoa. I'm still a prisoner to our rage. Fight the battle. We'll fight to the death until our lungs can hold no breath. Fight the battle. Get out of this place when we win the hard run race. Light your veins and watch the lights come on. Take up the reins and just don't give up yet. And fight the battle. We'll fight to the death until our lungs can hold no breath. Oh, fight the battle. Get out of this place because we've won the hard run race. We built a kingdom in my dreams. Where you were king and I was queen. Queen.
Thank you, guys. Great job. We really appreciate it. Next on the agenda, Ms. Fisher will deliver tonight's invocation, after which Mrs. Morgan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. After the special presentations portion of the agenda, I'm gonna call for a brief recess to allow those who wish to depart to do so without disrupting the balance of the meeting. But please stand for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together this day, and we ask for your blessings on all here present. Please guide and direct this meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Inspire us to make decisions which will benefit our school community. You are the source of all blessings. Please bless and protect our students, staff, and families with health, happiness, and peace in the coming holiday season. For this and all the gifts you bestow, we praise and thank you. Amen.
At this time, please welcome Major Retired Gordon Rodel, Senior Army Instructor from the JROTC Program at Ida S. Baker High School. He will introduce the cadet presenting the colors this evening. Major Rodel retired after twenty years of active Army service. He has taught JROTC for fourteen and a half years, twelve and a half years in Lee County.
Thank you. The national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight is presented by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Kenneth Hernandez, Cadet Battalion Commander for the Ida S. Baker High School Junior ROTC Program. As a student, he has achieved an overall grade point average of four point six four. Cadet Hernandez was a member of the award-winning Raider Team and Drill Teams. He was also a member of the Ida Baker JROTC Leadership Team, which qualified for and competed in the JROTC Leadership and Academic Bowl Finals, known as J-Lab, in Washington DC in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen. His team achieved two top-ten finishes, second in the nation in two thousand twelve and eighth in the nation in two thousand thirteen. And I may add, that's out of one thousand six hundred teams that started in the competition. He was president of his freshman and sophomore classes, junior class representative, two thousand thirteen homecoming king, and three-year member of the National Honor Society. He was a two-year member of the Varsity Cross-Country Team, where he qualified to run in this year's state finals. His future plans are to attend a four-year university on a senior ROTC scholarship and earn his commission as a second lieutenant in the United States Army. Please join Ms. Morgan saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Each year, the district solicits entries for its annual holiday greeting card display. And this year, the event was open to all of our high school students. Once the entries are received, the staff reviews them and votes for their favorites, which are then displayed out in the atrium throughout the holiday season, except for tonight. It is my privilege this evening to introduce our high school student artist. As I call your name, please come forward with your school representatives. From Island Coast, Jessa Baroni, student in the eleventh grade, Ms. Kristen Bruno, principal, and Mr. Scott Geltzler. Geltzer, excuse me. Congratulations. Congratulations. And I'm going to give them their certificate, which you will hold this up up there when you go up there. And also, this is for your scrapbook.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, there you go. From Cypress Lake High, we have Haley Keller, student in the ninth grade, Ms. Tracy Perkins, principal, and Ms. Marguerite Peltzer, art teacher. Congratulations. Wait a minute. There you go, Haley. This is for your senior scrapbook or junior scrapbook or whatever?
Freshman.
Alright, freshman, well.
It's okay. That's okay.
From Lehigh Senior High, we have Lauren Turson, student from the tenth grade. With Mr. Douglas McEver, Assistant Principal, and Ms. Lisa McCarthy, art teacher, please come forward. Congratulations. Lauren, this is for you. And this is for your scrapbook.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. Congratulations. Good to see you. From North Fort Myers High School, I'm gonna call up two student entries. I have from the eleventh grade, Amanda Daniels. And also Krista Sacconi from the eleventh grade. And I would ask Mr. Dale Houghton, who I think is already behind me, and Ms. Diane Miller. Diane Miller. Okay, congratulations, Diane. Congratulations. Now you are Amanda. Congratulations, Amanda. Wait just a minute. There you go. And you know what? That's for you. There you go. Congratulations, and thank you for entering.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Amy.
And from South Fort Myers High School, Edgar Garan, a 12th grade student, Ms. Melissa Lanyer, principal, and my daughter, Ms. Jeannie Dozier, art teacher. Congratulations. Good job. All right, Edgar, there you go. And here you go. Congratulations. Dozier's not going to come up. I know, and he's been too. From Cape Coral High School, we have Kathryn Folitas, student in the 12th grade, and I would invite Ms. Kim McGlohan, Assistant Principal, and Ms. Melissa Heinemann, art teacher, to come forward. Good job. But just a minute. For you. Congratulations. You owe me. I was going to send you one. I hope it works. And I got it. I have your gift. But I'll see you later. I can't wait to see you. I know you're proud of us. Good job. And now, from Fort Myers High School, we have Lee Rittenberg, 10th grade student. We have Mr. David LaRosa and Ms. Karen Autry, art teacher. Good job. There you go. Congratulations. I love your art. Happy holidays to you. How are you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
The artistic talent of these students and the dedication of their principals and art teachers are sincerely appreciated. Their efforts have continued to brighten our holidays and brighten our school district over the years. We appreciate you. We thank you for taking the time, and congratulations on your winning holiday cards. Anyone who would like to take a picture, please feel free to do so at this time, because Thank you, and congratulations again, students, and happy holidays to all of you, and thank you for sharing your artwork with us. It's okay, let's give them another round of applause. Thank you. 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 One more? I'll say y'all one. Oh, do you say that down? I can never remember. Would you hand me my red pen right there? Absolutely. Thank you. The character education word for December is kindness and compassion. Demonstrating concern for the well-being of others, giving support, and showing empathy. Be kind, treat others as you would have them treat you. Quote, "Be kind, remember everyone you meet is fighting a hard battle." And that was by Plato. Thank you.
We'll take a temporary recess now. Those of you who need to go or wish to go, we'll hold up starting the balance of the proceedings for about two or three minutes.
He looks like they were all from walking around. His boots. Huh? He's wearing boots, cowboy boots. This is the second pair he's had. Real, oh my, he got his first pair when he was two.
Mr. Martin, would you please address the agenda item of public comment?
School Board Policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Mr. Scott, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. Rules concerning public comment to the school board are posted at the back of the room and include the requirement that any speaker wishes to endorse the purchase of a product or a service in which that speaker has a personal interest, the speaker must reveal that interest before making comment to the board. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. The time allotted per speaker is three minutes. Mr. Scott, I have nine cards this evening.
Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who did not fill out a blue card and wishes to speak? Muncinard? On the left side? Mr. Martin, if you would call the first card.
First speaker is Mr. Bert Saunders.
And members of the school board, I do have a procedural issue I'd like to raise, if I might, before we begin to start the timer. There's a particular reason for that, but first, I want to congratulate you. You have a wonderful array of students here this evening. Very impressive. You have an awful lot to be proud of as school board members. For the record, my name is Bert Saunders with the Gray Robinson Law Firm. I'm representing Community Education Partners, the parent company for Accelerated Learning Solutions. Accelerated Learning Solutions serves as the educational service provider for the Charter Applicant Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee Campus, Number Two. I respectfully request that you waive your rules of procedure and permit me to have 10 minutes to address you on the staff recommendation of denial of the application for charter school status for the Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee Campus Two. I also request that we be permitted to make our comments at the time that that particular item is heard, that's Agenda Item 6F. I have copies of an email that I sent to Mr. Keith Martin on November 25th, in which I formally requested additional time for the presentation. Mr. Martin has forwarded that to the school board chairman and to the school board members as a courtesy to me. The justification for this request is that there were reviewer noted deficiencies in our application for charter status. However, staff did not permit us to meet with staff or to amend our application in order to respond to the noted deficiencies. We need additional time to explain to you, the school board members, why we should have been granted that opportunity to meet and to amend our application. Because of that denial, the review process for our charter application was flawed. So we are respectfully requesting to have 10 minutes to make a presentation at the time that Agenda Item 6F is heard, and that's also based on the formal request that I made on November 25th.
Mr. Martin, I would ask you if it is within order that his comments be delayed until that item appears on the agenda, or is it appropriate to have him speak in an extended period if the board is agreeable at this time?
Both of those issues are addressed by the school board's policy. The public comment time occurs at the beginning of the meeting, and the time allotted per speaker is three minutes. The school board can make exceptions to its policies, and in order to do so, there's a requirement for an extraordinary vote, meaning one more than a majority. With four members here this evening, three is a majority, so four board members would have to vote in favor of making that exception to policy in order for it to be granted.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion for an exception to School Board Meeting Policy Number 1.09, to extend the time for Mr. Saunders, to extend his time limit from three to 10 minutes, and to take it in the normal order of the agenda.
So, there's a motion on the floor to take this, to allow Mr. Saunders 10 minutes at the normal time in the agenda, which I am assuming you mean now?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
Support.
Second by Ms. Fisher. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A like sign?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one.
No.
It does not pass because of a lack of the four votes.
Then I assume from the vote that I will have three minutes to make the presentation, and that we have two other speakers that will address the school board.
That would be correct.
Before I begin, I do have some exhibits I'd like to hand out to the clerk. And then I have one more if it's not. This is just for the record. Okay. Madam Chair, or Mr. Chair and members of the school board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you this evening. I'm going to go as quickly as I can, and then we have two other presenters that will finish up. I am fully aware that every application for a charter school must stand on its own. The fact that Accelerated Learning Solutions has two fully accredited charter schools, dropout prevention programs, that have been recognized as exceptional programs in the county, and have been awarded a 10-year charter contract, we understand that that in and of itself is not a basis for approval of a third school, that the application has to stand on its own. The third school will be essentially identical to the accredited programs at North Nicholas and Coronado High Schools. The third school will have the same charter governing board, the same management company, and the same high-quality educational programs that have been recognized by this school board. You have a great staff, and nothing that I am discussing is a criticism of your staff. I believe they felt restricted in what they were permitted to do under their interpretation of your policies. In their effort to follow some very subjective rules of procedure, staff, in fact, treated us unfairly in the review process. We were not afforded the same opportunity as other applicants to amend our application to address issues raised by the application reviewers. Jeff McCullers advised us that he could not permit us to amend our application because our application was, quoting from his email, "not largely approvable." Mr. McCullers noted that School Board Policy 2.28 authorizes district staff to interview or communicate with charter school applicants for several purposes, one of which is to recommend amendments to the initial application if it is of sufficient quality to merit consideration. Applications must be largely approvable in their original form to pass this threshold. This is a very subjective determination. Staff was simply wrong in that determination. I've handed out to you four exhibits that I'm going to refer to you. These four exhibits show that we were not treated the same as the two applicants that were permitted to amend their application. As noted in Exhibit A for the Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee Campus, we had five reviewers recommending approval and only three reviewers recommending denial. The recommendations of denial came from the school board attorney, Proppert, and Houchen. Five reviewers recommended approval, Brown, Ferguson, Stelmacchi, Turner, and Tub. Take a look at Exhibit B, labeled Reviews of Palm Acres Charter High School Application. There were two amendments to the City of Palm charter high school application. On that application, one reviewer, Mr. Houchen, recommended denial, and three reviewers recommended approval. Brown, Stelmacchi, Tub, had recommended approval. Those three also recommended approval of our application. The school board attorney did not make a recommendation, even though the review reflected that there were 14 areas where the application only partially met the standard. The question I have for you is why was this application deemed largely approvable so as to permit two amendments, but ours was not deemed largely?
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Your time's up, sir. Next speaker is A.J. Noss.
Thank you. I'm A.J. Noss, Principal of Coronado High School. Now, take a look at Exhibit C, labeled Review of Acceleration Middle School Application. One amendment was permitted for the application. In the review of that application, five reviewers recommended denial. The school board attorney, Proppert, Hutchen, McDaniel, and Turney. The three reviewers that recommended denial of our application also recommended denial for the Acceleration Middle School Charter. The school board attorney, Proppert, and Hutchen, along with two others, denial recommendations. While this application deemed largely approvable so as to permit any amendment, but ours was not deemed largely approvable, what standards or definitions would be utilized by staff to determine that our application was not largely approvable so as to permit amendments to it? The evaluation process was fundamentally flawed. Staff made a decision as to which applicant would be permitted to amend their application. This was a policy-based decision that had a tremendous impact on the application review process. Staff permitted amendments to two applicants and worked collaboratively with them to bring their applications into compliance with state statutes and school board policies. Staff should have permitted us to amend during application and should have worked collaboratively with us also. In addition, staff made determinations as to what consensus was of the reviewers. The determinations of consensus was then utilized to decide which application would receive a staff recommendation of approval. How was a consensus determined and by whom? In reference to the application of Accelerated Learning, South Lee Campus Two, staff determined that the consensus of the district reviewers is that the application does not meet the minimum standard for approval, and the application should be recommended for denial by the school board. Take a look at Exhibit D, the summary of reviewers' recommendation. It seems to me that a consensus is a majority. Clearly, we have five recommendations for approval and only three recommendations of denial. The consensus was to recommend approval of our application. In summary, two errors were made by staff, not permitting Accelerated Learning, South Lee Campus, to amend its application. With five reviewers recommending approval, we were largely approvable and should have been afforded the opportunity to amend. And two, the determination that the consensus had been arrived at to deny the application even though the majority of reviewers, five, voted to approve the application. The evaluation of our application as compared to the evaluation of other applications was simply?
Thank you, Mr. Noss. Your time's up, sir. Next speaker is Ms. Eileen Quillen.
Board members, as we pointed out to staff in a lengthy spreadsheet, two important factors. One, we can show that we do, in fact, meet every standard for approval. Second, staff is required that we provide in our application information that was not requested in the application form. So what are we asking for? We ask that you direct staff to give us an opportunity to amend our application and to work collaboratively with us to bring our application into compliance with state statutes and school board policies, just as they did with Palm Acres Charter High School and Acceleration Middle Charter High School. We are prepared to come back for final action by the school board at We are prepared to come back for final action by the school board at your next meeting in January. We can have an amended application addressing all issues very quickly for staff review. This issue is important to the South Lee County students who have dropped out or who are likely to drop out of school. These students deserve to have these dropout prevention services in an accessible location. Thank you for your courtesy this evening and we appreciate the partnership that we have developed in Lee County to serve this challenged student population. That partnership was recognized unanimously by the board when we were granted a new 10-year charter renewal a few months ago. And I also might add that in other districts where we have submitted applications, for example, in Miami-Dade County Public Schools, we were invited to a meeting at which we reviewed the evaluation tool with district staff and they shared the concerns that they had. During that meeting, which lasted five hours, we were afforded the opportunity to provide clarifications, answer questions, and address any concerns that they had. The clarifications we provided in that meeting were sufficient to improve the rating in four of the 18 reviewed categories. In Broward County Public School District, we were invited to a meeting at which they shared concerns that they had and allowed us to provide clarification. They also accepted a revised document to correct a clerical error in our application. We are only asking that we have a similar opportunity with regard to the application submitted to Lee County School District for Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee Campus Two. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Amy Roner.
My name is Amy Roner and this is Sarah White. I represent the management company and Sarah is the principal of City of Palms Charter High School here in Fort Myers. It is our board and our staff together, many of whom are sitting in the back there, that have submitted the application to open Palm Acres Charter High School over out in Lee High. In 2005, City of Palms Charter High School, known at that time as Life Skills Center, Lee County, was authorized to operate our alternative charter high school for students 16 to 21 who would age out of high school before having time to complete all their credits and earn their diploma. Since '05-'06, our school has served over 2,000 students and graduated over 400. For the past eight years, our staff has remained constant working with district personnel to ensure we're always in compliance with Florida state statute, district policies, and our charter contract. We know our success is due directly to the love our staff has for our students. We don't work only on academics but help our students develop their long-term goals and plans to achieve them. Past successes of our school has led our school board to apply for the contract to open a second school in Lee High to be called Palm Acres Charter High School. Tonight, we're thrilled to have the opportunity to thank our superintendent, Dr. Graham, for the recommendation to the board to approve our application for Palm Acres Charter High School. And we also want to acknowledge the work of Dr. Jeff McCullers, Director of Charter Schools, his staff, the district reviewers, and to thank everybody for your due diligence. The application process is the basis for our contract to educate Lee County students and we know that our new school needs to meet statutory requirements, remain financially viable and sustainable, and to complement the mission of the district. We take this as a serious responsibility. Finally, we wish to thank you, the board members of the school district of Lee County. Your dedication to our students is displayed at every meeting. You don't take action lightly or without consideration for what's best for our students and community. Your support upon approving this application and authorizing the preparation of the contract to operate a new charter school in Lee High is greatly appreciated and we're looking forward to opening the school next fall and bringing the opportunity to graduate with a high school diploma closer to home for those students in the east part of the county.
Next speaker is Mr. Steven Toiber.
Good evening, board members, Madam Superintendent, Mr. Board Attorney. I'm calling, I'm discussing tonight about the consent to vote or the proposal to vote for RFP R137128JM, which is the Investment Advisory Services. I sent you materials today to everybody who is attending today about some issues about the process. If you take a look at your briefing book, all you have is the final 14 submissions of the RFP as far as how they rated on the matrix. The problem that I have is I'm not a financial planner, but what's more troubling is I don't believe that anybody that made that analysis has any financial planning experience either. And it looks like by the proposal bids that it was based solely on price of the management services and even if, even the recommendation says it looks like the best bang for the buck. But it doesn't, I don't see anywhere in those proposals, for example, there is a, currently Collier has a no-fee demand deposit account for $150 million that's being held. They're actually getting 75 basis points. All of our money is in FSBA. We took it out after the whole Blackstone incident that happened several years ago. Everybody put it over at FSBA and we're getting 25 or 30 basis points there. We can get 75 basis points over at the, at this, for the first $150 million, which is a considerable amount of savings, which kind of makes the whole management process fee of, you know, four and a half basis points across the contract just negligible. And so those are kind of issues that needed to be looked at that I don't think were actually looked at. Similarly, there was also issues as far as the recommendations. The RFP asked for recommendations, but the recommendations came in weren't specific enough to require them to be of that particular firm. For example, if I worked at a different firm and I gave a recommendation of how that portfolio that I did, that I now work for Firm A, but my recommendation was when I worked at Firm B, that's really not indicative of how I'm going to do in Firm A because Firm B might have had different resources or a different paradigm than how A is working. And I think that's what you're going to find in these recommendations. There's a lot of issues with the process, there's a lot of issues with the results that I think need to be looked at. And I just asked the board, there's no harm, we've never had RFP. Typically, we've had these type of services done with our district that have just, the best financial advisors would come to us with a new package and say, hey, we can move your money here and we did it. So I don't even know why we actually put it out for a bid, but, but that's a different whole discussion altogether. The choice is we did and we're moving forward and I accept that. But the issue of having decided today, I think, is premature. I think there's no harm of pulling the issue for today, tabling it, have you look at the material that I sent you, have you asked the questions that I posed, ask more questions than I'm sure you're going to have, and then if it, if it moves forward, if the process, and I'm not alleging at all that the, that the process wasn't done properly, I'm just saying there's some questions that I have that give me suspects. So I don't mean to disparage the process at all or the people that did it and I don't think there was any malice or intent or that there was anything done wrong. I just think it deserves a little more scrutiny and I just respectfully ask that it be tabled to give you the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Kenneth Cross.
Kenneth Cross, I'm here to speak on the RFP Number R137128JM. I'm a taxpayer and I don't think this is the best way to use my money. I don't think there's enough info on this. I'm not a money manager either, but I think we should pick one that is, that we can use and make our money the best way we can. I think there's a lot of flaws in this, what I've read and what I've been shown. And the company that you've picked, I don't think the references are quite clear. Their yield is based on a different component. Again, I just think there's better ways to spend our money. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Barbara Cook.
Graham, Chairman Scott, and the board members. For the record, my name is Barbara A. Cook. I am Secretary of the East Lee County Charter School Incorporated and I'm here this evening just to present a statement from the East Lee County Charter School Incorporated Board of Directors. The Board of Directors of East Lee County Charter School Incorporated acknowledges the recommendations of the Lee County School Board Superintendent as it relates to our request for approval of our application for a Lee County School District charter. As a result, it is our intent to rectify the deficiencies indicated in the recommendations and move forward to secure a charter. The application reflects the aspirations of the residents of the community, especially the parents, for an accessible, accessible neighborhood board based on, neighborhood based on the state-of-the-art school focusing on what is commonly known as steam, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. We do look forward to presenting to the Lee County School Board a charter school application that not only reflects the ideas of East Lee County Charter School, but also is consistent with the expectations of the Lee County School Board and the needs of our community. Again, it is our intent to rectify the deficiencies indicated in the recommendations and to move forward to securing a charter. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Mr. Marvin Getz.
Good evening, Marvin Getz, representing Lee County Substitute Teachers. Mr. Scott opened the meeting this evening with the idea at which we all have followed that the Lee County School District wishes to be a world-class situation, a world-class school district, not just for staff but for all of our students and all of our employees. My attitude and that of the substitutes is you must be a leader. This week, we saw the death of Nelson Mandela, who was a leader. Because in order to be a leader, you have to take risk. You have to have courage to your conviction and you have to persevere. It's not an easy road to follow. But for all of our staff, I am concerned about the fact that we still, reaching this point of the year, still have had no raise for our substitute teacher. I ask that you be a leader. Let's not worry about our following neighborhood schools, whether it's Charlotte County or Manatee or Collier. That's not what you want to do to be a leader. You want to set the pace. Let them follow us. So let's bring equity and justice to all of your substitute teaching staff by granting a fair salary increase. Thank you.
Our last card is from Mr. Anthony Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, Madam Superintendent, Mr. Martin, my name is Anthony Thomas. I'm here tonight to speak on two issues. The first issue I'd like to address, I'm a little disappointed, I was under the impression after our last meeting that we would have a student serving and sitting here. I gotta say, I supported the superintendent. I love having a woman superintendent, but I just think we need to, when the board says something, we need to implement it. We should have had this student here tonight. It would have been a good Christmas present to the students to see one of their own sitting here. I hope that as we move forward into the new year, this board will work with their superintendent and at the January meeting, we'll have a student sitting up here at this dais. That has been something I've worked on with Mrs. Dozier and others and Ms. Morgan and others for a long time. I'd just like to see that happen. I think that there's no reason why we can't get the students together. I know I've talked to each one of you individually before it was brought up. You get the, you get the student body presidents in a room, you let them elect somebody, elect somebody they serve for a year. I mean, this ain't rocket science. This can be easily done. So I would earnest the beseech our lovely superintendent to please work on this issue. Get those students together over the holidays, let them pick somebody. Let's have, as we go into the new year, students sitting on the board. The other thing I want to address with the school board, something else that, again, I'm a little disappointed on. I had a lovely meeting with our distinguished chairman. Matt Caldwell joined us in our meeting. I thought we worked out a pretty good agreement. The chair brought it up at our meeting that we had some months ago. He said that they would sunset all of the advisory boards, I think it was a five-year, and it could be all boards, could be re-implemented, reconstituted with a simple majority. I thought that was a pretty good solution. I encourage our three phenomenal women on the school board to accept the chairman's recommendation or, I don't know why this hasn't come back up. I've been busy working on some other campaign stuff, but I'm back here now and I'm going to really be pressing on this issue. And I think with the leadership under the chair, we had the school board vote to expand to seven members. That was unanimously endorsed by our state legislative delegation that's going to be going forward. I think one of the first things this board ought to do is not only get these two boards in place, preferably before the Black History Month, and one of the first assignments you ought to give this board, both of these boards, is to get their opinion on what configuration should the new school board take. Should it be seven, at large, member seven, single-member district, a hybrid system? I believe these two boards, the Hispanic and African-American advisor boards, can go a long way in advising you on these issues. Is my time up?
Not yet. Four seconds.
So I thank you very much, Ms. Dozier. I hope you bring this issue up. Let's get this thing for a vote tonight and get it back on the agenda. Thank you.
Those are all the cards, sir.
Ms. Mutzenard.
Mr. Scott, board members, Dr. Graham, my name is Donna Mutzenard and tonight I'm here as co-facilitator of the Instructional Calendar Committee. George Anna McDaniel, of course, was the other facilitator. Once again, we got to work together using the interest-based process to finish the instructional calendar and I'm speaking in support of that tonight. We had a little additional challenge this year with the fact that we had to follow Florida statutes and delay our opening of school as compared to what we've had the last few years. But we still got it done in four meetings. We had several new people on our committee, which jumped in with both feet, which I think is part of the interest-based process. It makes everybody feel comfortable enough to speak up and to have a say in what they feel should be done with the calendar. We had lots of different calendar options, so we feel this is the best calendar we could come up with. The committee all reached consensus on it and I would just like tonight to thank our committee for the wonderful job they did, for working so hard in the evenings after a full day of work for everybody. And they just did a fantastic job doing the calendar, even though it may not be the best, may not be what, exactly what we would like to see. I think they did a fantastic job and I'd like to thank each and every one of them, both those from the District Advisory Committee, TALC, SPALC, the superintendent's appointees, all 36 people did a fantastic job and we worked hard at it. Unfortunately, Mr. Armstrong was not able to be a part of it. I don't know what the problem was, but he never did make any of our meetings, but hopefully next year we'll have, either he can be our liaison again or he can, he can see the, see us in action using our interest-based process. Thank you.
The lady in the second row on the left side. Could you please identify yourself?
Ms. Laurie Fahey. And I have a couple things tonight. I'm gonna have to get my glasses on for this. I recently came across a transcript from October 30th for Race to the Top, where it shows that Lee County has agreed to test bank items for Pearson. My group is wondering what exactly the tests are, how many there are, if the county's being compensated for that, and if our children are getting any benefit from those. Let's see. And the other item was that I'm also hoping that you'll review the RFP R137128JM. Mr. Tauber mentioned. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Toiber, Mr. Cross, I'm sure we'll have some further conversation tonight about the item that you brought up. Mr. Getz, I don't know that we have not provided information in the past to the substitute teachers in terms of the rates being paid by this district relative to competitive districts. And if my recollection is correct, we stand close to the top of the heap in terms of what we are paying. So with limited resources and knowing that we're paying competitively more than fair rate, I would suggest, I'm not sure what else we could or should do at this point in time. But I understand your passion about it, and you're continuing to advocate for it. I'm just not sure what we'll be able to do in the short-term future. Mr. Thomas, a couple of meetings ago, we did have the students who will be part of the student panel here in the boardroom and introduce them to the public, so that is well underway, and Dr. Graham has...
They start in January. They begin in January.
Begin in January. They will be participating at that point in time, so that issue has been well under control. In terms of the expanded board, you're correct that the delegation did agree last week that they would take that local bill forward on behalf of the School Board. What it does is create an opportunity to put that before the voters and ask the voters if they would like to do that, and it requires us to constitute how those new board members would be allocated. So we have to have, once that approval is gained, we have to have that discussion. And so when it hits the ballot for decision by voters, could be later on this year, may not be until some future point in time, but that one is underway as well. We thank you all for your input. We'll move now to the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. And I'll ask board members if there are any items you wish to pull. Ms. Fisher?
Yes. 4B1, page 23, 4B3, page 31, and 4D1, page 79.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Dozier?
She pulled the one I was gonna pull. I was gonna pull B, 4B3, on page 31 as well.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
Okay. And...
Excuse me, Mr. Scott, the first item Ms. Fisher asked to be pulled was that 4B2 or 1?
One.
It was 1, but you said page 23, I thought.
I'm sorry. Page 5.
Page 5, excuse me.
And I was going to pull 4B3 myself, so that having been taken care of, all the other items will move on ahead, so I'll ask for approval of the agenda for consent with the exception of the three items noted by Ms. Fisher. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs....
Second.
Mrs. Dozier, second by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. We'll go to item 4B1 on page 5, and I'll ask the superintendent if she'd please report that item.
Approval of the budget amendment dated October 31, 2013, to amend the 2013-14 annual school budget.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dozier. Discussion.
And I just wanted to pull it for discussion, to comment on the loss of important dollars to early childhood education in our budget this year, and I find that distressing. There's a movement out there saying kindergarten is too late. I believe that's true, and so that was my comment.
Any further discussion? Hall in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes 4-0. The next item pulled was 4B3. Dr. Graham, if you'd report that one.
I recommend board approval to award RFP number R137128JM for Investment Advisory Services to Davidson Fixed Income Management, having submitted the highest-ranked proposal based on the Evaluation Committee ranking and negotiated pricing for the period of December 10, 2013, through December 9, 2015, with renewal options for two additional one-year periods upon the written agreement of the vendors in the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all documents.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Mrs. Dozier, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fisher. Discussion. Mrs. Dozier.
I'm going to discuss this issue based on a historical perspective. The year that this first was brought up was the year that the economy basically tanked, and many of you may remember when the SBA actually froze the district's money. I mean, it was front-page news, not only here, but it was front-page news on the Wall Street Journal, and I mean, it made international news. It didn't just make national news, but it made international news. And, you know, if we could have known then what we know now and where we would have been, we would have been able to realize that that was the first and an indicator of what was going to happen in our economy over the years. And this board, well, I'm gonna say, the board sat at this table that many years ago, and I believe it was five or six years ago, and we gave direction to the then-sitting superintendent that we would never put all of our money in one place again, that we wanted the money to be spread out. So, much to my surprise, when I found out that basically our money was all in one place, well, you know, we give direction and we say what we want, and yet staff works on something, and they believe that they are following the direction of the board. And it's my understanding that this has been worked on for quite some time. Present staff and previous staff have worked on this, this RFP. And it was not until I met with our staff members that I found out that in order to put money in different places, you can have a financial advisor, and then you can have an investment advisor. All right? We've had a financial advisor forever, you know, and that was Mr. Jerry Ford. We have not had an investment advisor. And in order to be able to take our money and put it in different places, we have to have an investment advisor, because basically, staff does not want the burden or the responsibility, because you can imagine what they would think would happen to their heads if they had that liability or responsibility, not to mention the fact that they're probably not bonded. And I would assume that these companies are actually bonded. Now, I did, that was one question, and I did not ask that question, but I'm seeing this, so they are bonded. So that, you know, that's another situation here. So, you know, it's be careful of what you ask for, because you might just get it. Well, we asked for something, and now staff brought it to us, and now all of a sudden there is, you know, this is a two-year contract, and I had a lengthy meeting with the superintendent, I had a lengthy meeting with staff members, the superintendent brought them into my office, and then all of a sudden she says, "Okay, it's up to y'all now." We all kind of laughed about that. But, you know, in those meetings, I had a great, much better understanding than what I have, whereas one person is presenting me something. Because sometimes when somebody's presenting you something, maybe it's not exactly the way it is. This is a two-year contract. We're not severing our relationship with Mr. Ford. You know, that was one thing that I found out, you know. It was my understanding that we were not going to have a relationship with Mr. Ford anymore, and yet that's not the case. Mr. Ford and his company are still going to be our financial advisor. However, we have to have an investment advisor. And I'm here to tell you tonight that we can opt out at any time if we are not making the gains that we are supposed to make. And the problem is, and I will, if Mr. Ford, and he and I have a, we had a good relationship, but if he were standing right in front of me tonight, I'd say, "You didn't sharpen your pencil enough." Because Dr. Graham, Ms. Morgan, and I sat and listened to a superintendent say, "We cut every contract, every vendor by 20%." Well, there are contracts that we have, I believe, that can be, we can sharpen our pencil with those contractors, with those vendors. And I think that is what staff, that is part of what staff looked at with this. It's a two-year contract. At any time, we can opt out if we're not getting what they have promised us that we're gonna get. Therefore, I will be supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yes, please. Yes, and I just had a couple of questions. It's been suggested that the RFP required a three-part investment strategy to include certain points, and that the vendor who was awarded the, to be the investment advisor, did not meet those requirements. So I have a couple of questions. You know, what is the level of services that we know that they can give to us? I understand that their fees were lower than other bidders, and do we have the credentials and the expertise of the staff? And what are the guarantees? I mean, what is the money that we're supposed to be generating from the investments? Is that listed somewhere? Is that, is there a proposal? Are there, is there a guarantee? So I think we just have a couple more questions to ask, and I have one other one. On the sheet for the RFP review and evaluation, the final ranking scores, the number four company had a higher proposal score than the three top-ranking companies, and I was wondering how that could be explained.
Go ahead, Dr. Do you mind if Dr. Desmore answers your question?
I would love it if she would answer my question.
They'll be much better answers.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, board members. You asked a few questions, so let me back up to the very first one. The first one was, you said that on the RFP, we asked for a three-tiered investment strategy, and the winning firm did not give that three-pronged investment strategy? I believe that was your first question. So in the RFP process, or in the evaluation process, there was a couple of rounds of that. The first round of the evaluation process, we did ask for a specific scenario. We asked them to give us a scenario or an investment scenario based on three different levels of investment, and in the first round, each of them did that. And the second round of the proposal, we went to a different question. We did not ask that same question in the second round, once we narrowed down the proposers to three. So we started out with 17. We gave them that addition, that first three-pronged scenario, then based on their responses, we narrowed the field down to three. Those three came back and then presented presentations for us, and in that second round, we really didn't ask the same question that we asked the first time.
Okay.
So I think that might be some of, that's what you're asking.
Yes. Thank you.
And then, there was other questions. Would you ask them again? I apologize.
Well, I asked about the fee. I understood, and from you and I having a conversation, that their fee for services was much lower over the course of what I thought you said was a four-year period.
Four-year period.
Four-year period. Right. Okay.
Initial two-year contract with an option to renew for another two if we choose to.
Okay. So they won on that point?
Well, that was one of the evaluation criteria, yes. And yes, the winning firm was the lowest, their proposal was the lowest price, and that was one of the criteria for evaluation.
And then I'm wondering about the expertise of staff, and how, you know, how do you determine that? Is there a reputation that this company has?
Yes. So the criteria for evaluation, under the first round, we received references for each of the vendors that submitted. And then in the second round, we actually went and called each of the vendors that the vendor submitted. Each of them, one of the criteria for evaluation was their experience working with Florida school districts. So for each of the vendors, we called the vendors that they gave, the references that they gave us, and we asked that they, you know, we preferred that they give us Florida school district references, so that we could talk to other people in organizations just like ours to find out what was the level of service they received, how satisfied were they with that service? Was there anything, any other points, positive or negative, that they would like to give us? And so each of those firms gave us references, very good references, from each of the school districts that they worked with, and in turn, each of the, you know, the companies that are there, we looked at what their history was, and the winning firm actually is a national firm, reputable, and has, you know, clients across the country and in the state as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Desmore, you said a national firm, they have an office here, yes?
They do. Yes. The people that we will be working with, they are, their office is located in Palm Beach Gardens, West Palm Beach or Palm Beach Gardens, one of those.
Great.
Mrs. Dozier.
And... And one...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay. And then my last question was about the scoring sheet, the review and evaluation sheet. On the sheet, in the final ranking score for proposal, the number four Investor Services Corp. had a higher score than the three that ended up being the top three. Could you explain that?
Let me get, I am not, at this point, looking at the scoring sheet that you're looking at. I have the final one, so let me just take a second and ask if anybody has...
You do.
Okay. Or if I can get a copy of what you're looking at. So as I look at what's here, and I'll have to go back, you know, to the scoring sheets and make sure that this is in fact what I, you know, what it should reflect here. What, the evaluation process of the RFP committee was that each of the individuals on the RFP committee would come back, would rank each of the firms, and then based on their individual scores, would come up with a 1, 2, and a 3, so a top three to bring back. For each of the RFP committee members, the top three firms were the same, 1, 2, and 3, which were the three that we brought back for second evaluation. The number four firm, Cut Water, was not one of them. I'm not sure where, I'm actually not sure where that comes from or why that reflects that, so I'd have to go back and check exactly why that is. Oh, Susan's here, she may know.
It's a typo. It should have been 283, not 183. They're listed in order.
Okay. They are listed in order. It is a typo. It should have been 283.
That's what I thought, too. That's what I thought.
Okay. You know, one of the things that I've always done is, I have always, since I've been on this board, I've always fought for local, I've always fought for the small vendor, I've always fought for vendors around the state, so that we could help our economy, because we are the second-largest employer, and who can they, who can those individuals depend on if they can't depend on the school district and the health systems to basically do business locally as much as you can? And when I say locally, I'm not talking about just Lee County, I'm talking about other counties in the state as well. I consider that local, to stimulate the Florida economy. And, you know, yes, they do have a presence here, but they are... And, you know, yes, they do have a presence here, but they are a national company. They're, they're, you know, if they had, if they were like Hertz and they wanted to move down here, I might feel differently. But I do feel a little different, because they're a national company that's coming in, trying to take a bite out of the apple everywhere that they can. But I think that we would not be here tonight, and this is no reflection on you, Dr. Desmore, and it's no reflection on Dr. Graham. In this process, the board gave direction to the superintendent. Instead of the recommendation coming forward, because we are talking about public money, we are talking about the taxpayers' dollars here. And they expect us to do our due diligence. They expect us to ask questions. They expect us to look into the situation. We would not be here tonight in this situation if there had been, if we had been briefed and, like, brought along all along. And as, as I said, we have had many changes in the organization, from one leader, it passed down to another leader, to another leader, and now, another leader is in that leader's hands. We are where we are. And because what gives me a level of comfort is the fact that we do have an opt-out clause, if they're not actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. So, that right there gave me a level of comfort. And also, the, what everybody is saying may not be, and what I'm saying, everybody, like, and I'm going to say, there are people that have been lobbied in the public. And the people that have been lobbied in the public may have heard from one side, or one particular individual. Obviously, it's one of the individuals that didn't make the cut, that didn't get the award of the, of the, the proposal, the RFP. Again, I say that we wouldn't be here this evening if we had had discussions in workshops, in briefing meetings prior to tonight, prior to, and like, I started working on this a week ago. I started working on this before the agenda ever came out. I got a phone call, I got a phone call at my home, not from any of the vendors, but from a concerned citizen that had heard about it. And so, my radar went up immediately. I shot that flag up, the flagpole as soon as I could shoot it up there, because I knew that there's something out there that's raising concern, and it's giving people indigestion, and, and acids are flying off the shelves. So, you know, I knew if other people are getting upset about it, if other people are having concerns about it, then I've got to look into it and find out what I can find out. And I, I do consider the fact that I think I've done everything that I could possibly do. I have met with the superintendent. I've met with staff. I've met with everybody that legally I can meet with to make my decision. And when I go to sleep tonight, and this is one of the things that I always say, I don't ever make a decision that I don't say, "Is it in the best interest of," and I say, "kids." Because this decision that we make will affect, in the long run, students. And I feel as though this decision is the best decision that can be made at this time. I feel like it is in the best interest of the students that we serve to make this decision and go along with this recommendation this evening. And I would urge, a week ago, two weeks ago, I wouldn't be where I am right now. Instead, I would have been urging my colleagues to vote against this. But instead, with the information, all the information that I have, information from every side, I would urge my colleagues to support this this evening, which I know there are some people out there that may be wondering why I have done this. But I've never publicly said what I was going to do until tonight. That's why I never give my vote away ahead of time. You know, the media may ask me how I feel about something, and I'll say, "Well, we'll discuss it at the table." But because of all the information that I have, I will support it this evening, and I know we can opt out. But in the future, Madam Superintendent, I would ask that something of this significance does not come to the table in the order of a recommendation and on the consent agenda. At that, for God's sakes, that's what really blew me away. It has no business on the consent agenda. It should not have to be pulled off the consent agenda. Now, if it had been workshop, and we had made a decision, and we all were comfortable with that decision, and there wasn't any discussion that was going to take place at this board table tonight, it could have gone on the consent agenda. But because this board, my colleagues have never had the opportunity collectively, for all of us to come together and make a, make, have any conversations about it. Because I can't talk to them anywhere but right here. The only way we can talk about it is pulling it off the agenda, have a conversation. It's not the right way to do things. And it's because of the situation of us changing staff many times where we are. But we've, somehow, we need to put a better mechanism in place to follow things through. This is one of those things, I told you, we were going to find things constantly that fell through the cracks. This is another one of those things that fell through the cracks. And it's, you know, if I sound a little, if I sound a little stressed out, I am. And it's not anything to do with you or you. Nothing to do with the two of you. It's the system. So, please don't take anything that I'm saying personally. It's the system that I'm frustrated with. Because in a quality organization, I keep going back to that, this should not have fallen through the cracks. This should have been on the radar, and this board, the previous, in fact, we've had a previous board, another board, and now, another board. So, it should have been talked about three times with three different boards. Not just one board, but three. So, that's why my level of frustration is off the charts, and it's with the system, and why we are forced to make a decision when we have not adequately had the discussion that we should have had. And that's where I'm, thank you.
Other comments? Well, I, I had a couple of questions that I believe have been answered, but I'm going to ask them again publicly.
Okay.
On the document itself, when it says fiscal impact, the estimated annual expenditure for the first year is a hundred and sixty thousand, now, we funded from budgeted general funds. I was confused in reading that, whether we were talking about paying a hundred and sixty thousand a year, each of the two, plus two years, which would be extraordinary, as far as I'm concerned, unless there were some tremendous investment decisions that were made. And I think you've clarified it, but if, if you could do it again publicly, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Well, that, that amount is dependent on the amount of money that is to be invested. The, the RFP that you're getting, that you're getting ready to vote on, the pricing structure of the vendor was that they would charge four, four basis points for each of the dollars that they invest. So, assuming that we would invest up to an amount of $400 million, that four basis points would equal $160,000 for the year. Now, it would be, it would be expected that the amount that we receive in our investment earnings would exceed that fee that we would be paying. So, we would be net positive for anything that we do. And if we turn out that we're not net positive, then it's at that point that we can call the out clause in order to, you know, restructure the contract or get out of it if, if you choose to. But that's assuming that amount of investment. And it would be based on cash flows. So, based, looking at what we have for cash flows now, it's probably unlikely that we would invest that much. I don't think we're going to have 400 million to invest. However, on the agenda item, we went on the high side, so we would not have to come back and say, "Well, now, you know, we're going to do more." We anticipate that it will probably be somewhere between 250 to 300 that we invest, million that is.
Well, when you're talking about 150 to 300 to 400 million dollars, I know there are people out there whose hair is standing straight up on end, wondering, "What are they doing sitting on all that money?" And the fact of it is, it isn't our money. It's taxpayer money that's been committed, but hasn't yet been spent.
Correct. That, that, that's right. That's correct. And we want to-
Why we end up having a balanced budget at the end of the year, because everything is paid out. So, this is, in, in a business sense, some, something like a float that you've got hanging out there between receipts and obligations, that you can earn a little bit of money on in the meantime. And my recollection doesn't go back as far as yours on the board, Mrs. Dozier, but I remember a couple of years ago, asking a question, when this all came up again, "What happens to that money?" And I was told that it was invested. Well, I didn't ask the next question, which was, "Who was investing it?"
Right.
Which is the question that should have been asked, and we would have found out then, that it was an internal staff member that was making the investment. And, and I don't criticize them, or anyone who-
And it was all in one place.
All in one place? A terrible risk to ask that person to take, and an impossible position to put them in, given all the other work they had to do in the course of their jobs. So, I, that's where I think the genesis of all this came from, and it may have been there long before that, but to my recollection, that's where it came from. And I'm glad we've gotten to this point, because it's really not something that our finance people ought to be worrying about day by day, because to me, those are day-by-day decisions. Where do I put the money to get the best pop for it that I can? And I don't mind paying somebody to do that, but I mind a lot paying them more than what they're getting for us in the back. So, that answers the third question I have, and I pose that as a business person. What's our weasel clause? How do we get out of this thing if we need to? And it sounds like that's parked in there, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
All right. We're, we're ready to take the vote, then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes four to nothing. The next, the next item pulled was 4D1, appearing on page 79. Dr. Graham, if you'd report that item for us, please.
I recommend board approval to change the bell times for four Title I schools, Colonial, Franklin Park, Harns Marsh Middle, and Manatee, to provide additional instruction for five months, beginning January 8th, 2014, through May 28th, 2014, with no fiscal impact to the district.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dozier. Discussion.
Discussion. And, and that's why I pulled that for discussion. In September, we were briefed on this item, and this is a use of our supplemental education services money. And I wanted to say that I thought it was a diligent move to change the bell times and incorporate the additional reading time into the school day, with adequate notice to the parents, and an opportunity for the children to have the least amount of disruption and get the most amount of instruction, so that it would benefit them. And I wanted to thank Dr. Graham and staff for that.
Mrs. Dozier, did you have a comment?
No, I have none. Thank you.
Morgan?
Thank you.
Well, the experts all seem to tell us, the longer a school day is, the better. The longer a school year is, the better. This satisfies, on four schools, one of those criteria. And since we're using taxpayer money, whether it comes out of local pockets, or whether it comes out of our fellow taxpayers around the country's pockets, I think we've got an obligation to watch it and see what the, what the improvement is, the gains that students make, and, and see that reported back to us, back to an earlier discussion today. What are we getting for what taxpayers are paying for? So, I fully support it, and will do it. And it may tell us some things, if we study it properly, about how we need to look at the future in terms of longer school days, longer school years, year-round schools, that kind of thing, in order to handle the obligations we have to benefit students. So, I'll, I'll be supporting this one.
And, and I think one of the reasons is that this is, this is more targeted, it's more manageable. Historically, with those funds, it may have been a little bit more haphazard, and some of the success rates were not what we wanted them to be. So, I'm anticipating that this is going to be a much better way of implementing the program. Thank you.
So, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four zero. That takes care of all of the consent items. We'll move now to superintendent's recommendations. Item 6B.
May I introduce one person now the consent agenda is finished?
Certainly.
We, we do have a new assistant principal at Riverdale High School, and that is John Rozell. John, where are you?
Over here.
Welcome.
First recommendation, approval of the 2014-15 instructional calendar as presented.
Now, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Dozier, second by Ms. Fisher. Discussion. Mrs. Dozier.
I have served on the calendar committee, and the work, while it sounds like four meetings, it really isn't just four meetings. There's a lot, there's what, thirty-something people that serve on that committee? And when you have the very first meeting, you get an assignment. And your assignment is to go home, start making up some, you know, different scenarios, come back with your issues. And so, the people that, while, while you say it was four meetings, there's a lot more time that went into the actual building of this calendar. And while Ms. Mutzenor said that, due to the fact that the restraints that were placed on us as a result of the legislature, we cannot start, but there's, there's something that goes along with that. And what goes along with that is the grade of the district. And why that has anything to do with the other, it beats me. I don't know. I think that was a compromise that occurred up in Tallahassee. Because it really doesn't make any significance, because you would really want to have all of your semester at one time and not broken, like this is going to force us to do, because there's no way to complete the semester before the holidays. Dr. Graham, you know, I'm, I know that this is the best product that they could bring forward, because they wouldn't have brought anything forward that they, that wasn't the best product. But my challenge is to you, and that is to move us to where we are, we are in the situation to where we will not have to comply with that, that restriction in the future.
So noted.
Hopefully, we will just jump right back up there next year to an A district, and we will be able to, we will be able to set the time accordingly. So, I'm going to support this, but I'm going to challenge you to make, make your pixie dust glow and, and take care of business.
Other discussion?
I'm not sure we budgeted any pixie dust, but I'll see what I can-
I have a little. I'll give you some.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Item C, please.
Approval to piggyback the county of Los Angeles bid number M A I S 1040222-1 for telecommunications supplies and accessories awarded to Gray Bar Electric Company for the period of January 1st, 2014, through December 31st, 2014, at the estimated expenditure of 1 million, with an option to cancel it deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, second by Mrs. Dozier. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Item D, please.
Approval of the application for charter school status from Acceleration Education Services Incorporated for a grade six through eight school to be called Acceleration Middle Charter School.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Dozier, second by Ms. Fisher. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Item E, please.
Approval of the application for charter school status from City of Palm Charter High School Incorporated for a grades nine through 12 school to be called Palm Acres Charter High, Charter High School.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Dozier, second by Ms. Morgan. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes four zero. Item F, please.
Denial of the application for charter school status from Florida High School for Accelerated Learning South Lee County Campus Incorporated for a school designed for students in grades nine through 12, named Florida High School for Accelerated Learning South Lee County Campus School Two. An adoption of the executive summary is the notice of specific reasons for denial to be provided to the applicant.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Dozier, second by Ms. Fisher. Discussion. Mrs. Dozier.
Yes. I would like to make a motion to send this application back to staff and have staff work collectively or collaboratively with this group and bring it back to us in January.
Essentially, I would understand that to be a motion to postpone to a time certain-
Motion to postpone, yes.
To-
Postpone to a time certain to the first meeting in-
Postpone to time certain to the first meeting in January.
Where does that stand in line with the original motion to approve?
Well, this is somewhat similar to a motion to table, except that it's to a time certain. You have the ability, under Roberts' rules, to discuss a motion to postpone, which is different than a motion to table. And if the motion to postpone passes, then there would be no action. Action would be delayed on this particular recommendation this evening.
That motion requires a second?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Motion to postpone does.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fisher. Discussion. Mrs. Dozier.
Well, the reason I made this is because of the information that has been given to us. And I had a meeting with a representative from this charter school, as well as Mr. Martin. And I took a lot of notes, I listened to a lot of information, and then I asked Mr. Martin some very compelling questions. My first question was, have we always done it like this? Well, no, we've changed the process. I said, wait a minute. What do you mean we've changed the process? Well, we're looking at the applications much more critically now than we did before. I said, okay, let me ask you this. Have we told the applicants that we are looking at them much more critically than we have in the past? Have we told them that we have changed the process? The answer was, well, no. I said, okay, then I have a great concern with this. And let me give you an example of something that happened, and again, I go back to history. And one of these days, I'll be gone, and y'all won't have to listen to my history anymore. We had a situation with contractors and buildings, and we changed our scoring mechanism that we used. And we changed the scoring mechanism that we had used for years, and yet we didn't let the contractors know that we had changed the scoring. So all of a sudden, the contractors, you know, when we put something out for a bid, the contractors come forward, and they do just like they've always done, because maybe they didn't read the real fine, fine, fine print or whatever, and everything just kind of was a little off. And I said, wait a minute, you know, and I went to the superintendent, I said, wait a minute. How can this be? How could this happen? Well, you know, we've changed the scoring sheet, and they've got to pay better attention. I said, did we let them know that we have changed our processes? The answer was no. And I said, shame on us. You know, we are supposed to be good neighbors with these people. We are doing business with these folks. We've had a longstanding relationship with this group. In fact, a charter school down in the area where they are proposing to put this charter school will house some of the very students that sat right here in front of us and very passionately spoke. So guess what we did with that situation with the contractors? We then started having an invitation for a meeting, an invitation to get information. And the contractors were brought into this room or the room at the other district, the other office, and they were told the process that we use for scoring when we go out for a contractor bid. All right? This is just like that. This is a situation where we have changed our process. We're looking at things more critically, and we may not be accepting the same things that we used to accept. Therefore, it is my belief that we have a responsibility to be a good neighbor with these people that are helping to service our children. Therefore, I will be supporting this motion to postpone so that staff can have the opportunity to work collaborative with these people so that they can get it right because of our changes that we've made or our, what different way of looking at things. And then we can come back here and we can approve it in January.
Other discussion?
Yes, and in reviewing this, I'm wondering if the process is consistent in all cases, and by that I mean equitable. I see that in the chart, we have, for one school, we have 11 reviewers, five approve, five deny, one has no recommendation, it's approved. Then we have another one that's seven reviewers. So, and I know that the applications are cumbersome and lengthy and take a lot of time, and I commend staff for taking the time to do that because I'm sure it is tedious. But it looks here like it's all over the place as far as the chart goes. And then I wonder about the reviewers. Are they, is there a special training that they need? Are they aware of all of the rules and requirements from the state? And so that's kind of where I'm going with this, and I'm glad that you asked that question about, did we inform them?
Well, and if I may?
Yes.
Bring something forward to these three documents that you received, the documents, and I've got mine numbered because I was going to give you documents, but they've given theirs A, B, and C. But if you look at all three of those documents, notice there is one particular person who has scored differently, and those are the attorneys. We have two different attorneys that have, and when I ask that question, it's because they thoroughly reviewed, reread, looked again, and read again. And so this is why they didn't just take part of the documentation and the actual application, but instead, they looked at the entire thing. Now, you had one attorney with one set of eyes, and you had another attorney with another set of eyes. But if you look at the final outcome in the documentation that you were just bringing up, and I wasn't going to bring this part up. If you look at the review for the high school for accelerated learning, Mr. Martin says deny. And if you look at Mr. Pendley, it says deny. And yet, these are the two that would be weighted because they have looked very critically at it, and yet, the accelerated middle school application is coming forth tonight for us to approve that.
Right.
So...
But we did already, yeah.
Right, that we've already approved.
And I know that they're looking for compliance. I mean, and that's a critical piece of it.
And when you look at it, it's, and I've got a lot more documents that I didn't copy for all of you, but when it talks about staff worked collectively, well, that language, what does collectively mean? Does it mean that they sat down with these other individuals and, you know, told them what they needed to do in order to meet the standards to where they could be improved? Or exactly how did they get to the point for approval, and one group got to the point for not approval? So, you know, another thing that I've always been is that I want us to be fair and equitable across the board to everyone, and I just feel as though there may have been a different standard here, and therefore, that's why I'm asking for this consideration in the form of a motion to postpone.
Ms. Morgan?
I'm not going to support the motion to postpone. Essentially, from all the documentation I got, it seemed to me that there were two issues. One, that we were treating this school differently from other schools supported by this same company. And the other was that we were treating this particular application different than other applications. And as I understand it, having talked to staff and having looked through all of this, essentially, I read two things. One is, it's the degree of failure to meet the standard. In other words, you have a rubric for each of these standards. It's not a pass or a fail. It's a gradation of standard. And the degree of failure in some of these cases was significant. Secondly, I think that what needs to be looked at is the evaluators in the specific area... Well, there were some evaluators who evaluate the entire contract, and there were some who evaluate the component that matches their skill set, their area of responsibility. And so in reading some of the areas of responsibility and the denials, that suggests to me that it is a substantive action on the part of that individual. And so that's why I'm looking at what the individual raters did, specific to their content areas, and I'm looking at the overall ratings as overall, the raters who do the rating for the entire package, as looking for congruity, I guess, amongst the various evaluators. So I have, I see no need to table this or to postpone this because I think that the staff has made a valid recommendation. I think they have given me adequate reason to feel confident with their recommendation. So, thank you.
So the motion on the floor is to postpone till January 14th?
Mr. Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
If indeed the board... First of all, Mr. McCullers is here. He could explain those scoring sheets if he wanted further explanation. But if indeed the board does choose to postpone, staff would need at least until the January 28th meeting to be able to adequately review. And I want to be clear, we're asking for an opportunity to review and possibly approve? Is that what's... I just want to be clear on what it is we're looking for.
That's the...
Amend the... Are we asking that this motion would include that the school was able to amend their application?
That's the gist of what's being asked.
Staff would need to have at least until the end of January, which would be the January 28th meeting rather than the first meeting.
So, Mr. Martin, can I do a friendly amendment and just change from the first meeting to the meeting, the 28th meeting?
Yes, you can move to amend your motion to postpone.
Why won't you let me just have a friendly amendment? All right, I would like to make a motion to amend my motion to postpone to the time certain of January the 20... I don't have that date.
28th, yes.
28th.
And does the second agree with that? Ms. Fisher?
This is a separate motion, so you need another second.
Separate. Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
The next step is a vote on the motion to amend.
And the only reason, the motion to amend or the amendment to the motion?
Sorry. The motion to amend, the motion to postpone, to change the date to January 28th is presently what's on the floor.
Okay, so, and the reason, obviously, I made that was because of the request of the superintendent. She asked that we change it, so I'll be supporting this as well.
Well, my concerns are that the staff spends a considerable amount of time. And I think in my discussions with Jeff in the past, it's probably $5,000 or $6,000 per application on the low end of things. When you look at the total we've looked at tonight, we're talking about $40,000 to $50,000 worth of time and effort that's gone into it. And to quote Mr. Saunders early on, he didn't expect something special for him. They expect it to have been judged based upon what it was, not this was, not things in the past that may have been submitted. Which takes us to Mrs. Dozier's concern, and that is, did we change the standard without announcing that change and giving specific direction? Those are the concerns I have and would be the only reason that I would be supportive. Yes, sir?
Just a housekeeping, before we move on to substantive discussion, you may want to take a vote on the motion to amend so that the motion to postpone is clarified.
Okay, so, all in favor of the motion to amend, that the return of the information would be for the meeting of the 28th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we'll press onward. So I'm giving you my impression and my concern about where we are with the whole thing.
I didn't vote.
Huh?
I didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, opposed?
Opposed, by like sign.
Yes.
All right, sorry about that. Three to one, that motion to amend passes. But Mr. Saunders said that he didn't expect this to be looked at any differently than the previous ones, or he did expect it to be looked at differently than the previous ones. Did we, in fact, give them the information? And everybody else that we've approved tonight and disapproved?
Well, you know, a lot of questions at once here, but to answer that specific question, the process changed between the time that the two existing schools were first proposed, which was seven years ago, I think. Those schools were proposed at a time when there was no statute requiring use of a state model application form and no statute requiring use of a model review form. Each district used their own system, their own standards, and their own process. In the interim, while those schools were approved and operating, the state changed the statutes, added the requirement for the model application and the model review form. The state board then adopted that, those forms. I served on the committee that developed them, and we arrived at a statewide model. And so this is the first time that this applicant has submitted a proposal using the new forms. And yes, all applicants were notified of use of the model application form at the time that they were announced, and they're available on our website, and they've been used ever since they were adopted.
Other comments or discussion? Mrs. Dozier?
I would have one question for Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin, we discussed this yesterday. Did we say that we have changed procedures that we do, and we have not actually notified the companies and the charter representatives of the changes? Did I ask you that question?
Yes, ma'am.
And did you tell me that, yes, we had made changes and we haven't notified them? And then my response, I believe, was that I don't think that's being a very good neighbor, and I think I used the example of the building situation, and we brought them all in so that we could be a good neighbor. And that's where I'm standing tonight. You know, we're splitting hairs here. Yeah, we told them there was a model form, but we didn't point out specific things that we were going to be looking for. Therefore, I think that we have an obligation to work with these people because they do service our children, and they actually help us with the class size amendment. So I feel very strongly about this, and I appreciate all the work that you do, and I understand that it takes a lot of work to review all these applications and go over all of these applications. But I don't feel as though I am asking you to do anything that wouldn't be fair because in the long run, we're going to have to expose why this is, the reasons and the rationale for not accepting this application anyway. Why didn't we just do it in the beginning? You know, saying, well, wait a minute, this is something that, we don't allow this anymore. Instead, you know, this is something, you know, we look at it differently now. We want, you know, we've changed our expectation here. And I feel very strongly about, you know, that's transparency. We all talk about transparency. We all talk about putting everything out there so we can all have the same information. Well, obviously, we're clutching information, and we're not sharing it with the people out there that need to have it so that we can be in, you know, in good standing with us.
Do you want Mr. McCullers to address the score sheets, since that was part of your discussion?
I do.
Thank you.
So we've approved the motion to postpone to the 14th?
No, sir.
No.
You approved the motion to amend, the motion to postpone. So what's before, what's on the floor right now is the motion to postpone to January 28th.
So is there any discussion relative to that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Vote is three to one, the motion passes.
I know this is a violation of your rules, but I want to thank you for your careful consideration this evening, and happy holidays to all of you. Thank you.
The sheriff will be down to get you in a second.
[laughing].
All right, move to item G. Dr. Graham?
Denial of the application for charter school status from Community Connection Services, Inc., for a school designed for students in grades K through 5, named Dunbar Charter Academy. An adoption of the executive summary is the notice of specific reasons for denial to be provided to the applicant.
Heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fisher.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dozier. Discussion. Mrs. Dozier?
Is this the first time this applicant has come before us?
First time for this Dunbar Charter? Dunbar Charter Academy? Is this the...
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the like sign. Opposed, the like sign, motion carries four zero. Item H, please.
Denial of the application for charter school status from East Lee County Charter School, Inc., for a school designed for students in grades K eight, named East Lee County Charter School, and adoption of the executive summary is the notice of specific reasons for denial to be provided to the applicant.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fisher. Any discussion? Mrs. Dozier?
Same question, is this the first time for this applicant? He can't...
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll be asking that for every denial.
Further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Item I.
Denial of the application for charter school status from Florida Futures Academy Charter Schools, LLC, for a school designed for students in grades nine twelve, named Florida Futures Academy, Lee County Campus, and adoption of the executive summary is the notice of specific reasons for denial to be provided to the applicant.
Heard the recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mrs. Dozier, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fisher. Mrs. Dozier?
Same question. First time applicant?
Yes, it is. Florida Futures, yes.
It is the first time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the like sign, motion passes four nothing. Item J, please.
Denial of the application for charter school status from New Tech Preparatory Academy, Inc., for a school designed for students in grades six twelve, named New Tech Preparatory Academy, and adoption of the executive summary is the notice of specific reasons for denial to be provided to the applicant.
Recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier.
Same question.
Yes, it's first time.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the like sign, a motion carries four zero. Board attorney recommendations, please.
Yes, Mr. Scott, board members have one recommendation this evening. As Florida statute requires that the school board appoint a school board member to serve on the county value adjustment board. At its November board organizational workshop, the school board discussed appointing Ms. Kathleen Morgan as the primary and Ms. Mary Fisher as the alternate. So, this evening, I'm recommending board approval of the appointment of Ms. Kathleen Morgan as a school board member to the value adjustment board, with Ms. Mary Fisher as the alternate school board member.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Wholeheartedly second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mrs. Dozier. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. No public hearing tonight. Other business, board member comments and reports. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes, I'm going to be very brief this morning. I want to thank our talented students who created our Christmas cards, and to the Cypress Lake Acapella Group for entertaining us before the meeting, they were wonderful. I want to thank our staff who teach, support, and inspire our kids, and I want to offer wishes for a happy, healthy, peaceful holiday season, and look forward to seeing you all come back in 2014 with renewed energy. I want to close with a quote from Dr. Seuss, from How the Grinch Stole Christmas. "It came without ribbons, it came without tags, it came without packages, boxes, or bags. Then the Grinch thought of something he hadn't before. Maybe Christmas," he thought, "doesn't come from a store. Maybe Christmas perhaps means a little bit more." That's all I have, thank you.
Mrs. Dozier?
Thank you. I will be brief, I'm not going to talk about my visits to school and such, but I am going to talk about the legislative delegation that we met last week with our delegation, and I want to announce that we have a platform that this board has unanimously approved, as well as our platform for our Greater Florida Consortium, and also the Florida School Boards Association platform. And I will be appealing and calling upon our community members, our parents, our business leaders, to please assist us in reaching out and working with our legislators so that they can advocate for the planks in our platform so that we can bring it home. And when I say bring it home, I'm talking about bringing home the dollars so that we can effectively and efficiently, with levels that are adequate for our operational cost, provide a world-class school system. Also, I attended the FSA, FSBA training last week for the ethics training, as well as some of my colleagues, all of my colleagues sitting here attended it as well. And I also attended several breakout sessions during the conference itself, and I presented material to all of you in regard to that. And instead of giving a report here at the table, I just provided written information to you. Also, I'd like to do a shout-out to the A Acapella Group from Cypress Lake, outstanding job. And, you know, I want to thank our kids because every, that did the Christmas cards. Every year, we have been doing Christmas cards now for years and years and years, and I'm going to say one more time, I said one time that I would really like to see us put those cards up, and I notice I want to thank Dr. Graham for putting up the Christmas decorations. The first time in the history of this building do we have any decorations in this hall, because it hasn't been. It takes a woman's touch to do that. So, I'm hoping it will also take a woman's touch to redo something that we did for years and years and years, and that was the children's Christmas cards were painted, or holiday cards were painted in big, bigger-than-life form. They were, they used to be put on the top of a building. I'm not asking to put them on the top of the building, but we've got a nice, pretty sign right out there, right out there where everybody turns in, everybody that goes down Metro sees them. I used to sometimes just drive downtown and just drive to that little circle just to look at those cards when I was in a bad mood. We'd put a spotlight on them, it was incredible. I am, I am challenging you to have that done by next year. I love to challenge you, Dr. Graham, because I know that...
That's number three tonight.
I know that you can make it happen. Well, you owe me, you want me to tell you how many you still owe me? Okay, I won't go there right now. Also, I'd like to wish everybody a very happy holiday, and I want to tell all of our children, as you're out for the holidays, I know your teachers have given you reading lists, take those seriously, do you a little review before you come back for the holidays in the new year, after the holidays in the new year. And I wish all of our teachers, all of our staff, a very, very, very happy and pleasant holiday and safe holiday season. All of you be careful because there's a lot of people out there that are taking risk on the highways, we want all of you to come back safe and sound. Dr. Graham, congratulations on the accomplishments that you've done, and I just can't wait to see those holiday cards up on the corner next year. Thank you. No pressure.
Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, I, I'm going to try to be brief, I'm just going to report out on some of the things that happened at the Florida School Boards Association meeting in December. And I'm, and this first comment is really to the parents who have been advocating, and some of the staff who've been advocating regarding Common Core. Kim McDougal, education coordinator of Office of Policy and Budget and advisor to Governor Scott, commented that all of those statements that were given to the state about Common Core will be collated and reported by spring of 2014. So, you will, there will be a response. A decision about Florida assessments will be made by late spring 2014. She admitted that accountability lacks meaning, and that that is something they have to work on. The measures must be simple, transparent, and fair. She said the teacher evaluation requires further study. And student's history, which is the data piece, is a security work in process. So, they would like to have you believe that they have heard all of the conversation from all of the stakeholders in the state, and that is, that is their response at this point. Asked about the cost of meeting the technology mandate, the response was, every legislative bill has a fiscal impact section. The school board's job is to question legislators and lobbyists about the costs associated with mandates. That is, we price out the costs and compare to what is attached to the legislation and make our own argument. Then, I went to a session where the State Department of Education, represented by Pam...
What are you talking about?
Stuart. Pam Stewart was there, and her staff. There, proposed, the Department of Education proposed budget assumes a two percent increase in FEFP funding, which is about three hundred and eighty-seven million dollars, but it includes directed allocations, forty million for technology statewide, eight point nine million for Algebra One math camps, six point three million for dual enrollment, point six million for small district disparity, non-FEFP fourteen, fifteen initiatives, eight point four million for school administrator professional development, five million for school district professional development. This is statewide, training and technical assistance related to the implementation of statewide standards. They're also looking for gaps in bandwidth, and they're going to spend money doing two inventories a year to make certain that what we're reporting as bandwidth is equal to what they, their test shows us, and that our investment in technology is actually being used effectively. They're exploring the use of cloud services, oh, and this is back to the standard assessments. Scott issued procurement requirements for an ITM which is already out there. Bids are due by December, the decision by March on the state assessments. The Florida Consortium, the Greater Florida Consortium Business Meeting, the only thing notable there was that they have been discussing a legal challenge to the common charter school application. They have put that on hold pending discussion in the legislature this year. And then, one thing that I was very excited about, and I've already talked to Dr. Graham about this, Kevin Baer, chairman for the Center for College and Career Readiness, talked about the next steps for implementing Common Core standards and offered that the Florida Leadership Consortium for the Center for College and Career Readiness has twenty million dollars to provide to Florida school districts with direct support for board development, community presentations, district leadership, graduate-level training, training for principal and building leadership teams, and PLC, a distance coaching. Eight million's already been allocated to districts, working with the Center for College and Career Readiness, but twelve million remains available, up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per district. And I, and it's a first-come, first-served basis, and I have encouraged Dr. Graham to get our name in there ASAP, because I think that will be incredibly helpful to us. And like everyone else, best wishes for a wonderful holiday, a safe holiday, and we'll see you in 2014. Thank you.
Thanks. This afternoon, I spoke a little bit about my meeting with County Commission Chair Keiker. We talked about a couple of, of things that were of interest to the school board. The idea was to try and find some common ground where we could work together. One of the things we talked about was the capital needs of the district, impact fees, certainly they have affected when it comes to us, but we talked about the other options that are in front of us to generate potentially capital funds to do the building and maintenance operations that we need to do here, just to keep him apprised. The other issue we talked about was SROs, and I was asking that they remain consistent with support of the SRO program within our schools, and we do pay a fifty-fifty basis with the sheriff's office. And I, I quite frankly was a little taken back by his expressed opposition to continuing to do that over the long haul. And I recognize that he represents one vote on the county commission, but he is the chair. This is a pretty serious issue, and as a result, this afternoon of our discussion, and Ms. Morgan made the suggestion that we have a workshop on security shortly, and from there, then we can formulate some discussion where we can have a, hopefully, a roundtable discussion with the county commission and talk about that issue, as well as some others that might pop up. But it's my intention to try to continue to meet with him at least for forty-five minutes or an hour once a month, just to stay tight on what they're doing, what their interests are, and to keep them apprised of what ours are as well. This morning, I, I had an opportunity as the chair to, to go to the foundation meeting. I always find that to be an exciting group of people who are more than dedicated to the work that we're doing here at the school district. And if you've never been around those people before, I would suggest that you try and take a chance to, to at least stick your nose in for a few minutes and see what the excitement level is there. They are, they are wonderful in terms of the breadth of programs that they are making available for our students and the, and the benefits. I did mention to them to, the two issues that I thought were very important for us to deal with on an ongoing basis, and the capital aspect was, was one of them, finding a solution to that problem. And an ongoing commitment I have personally to find ways to get parents more engaged in what's going on with their students from an academic point of view. And that did come back three or four times in comments from members of the group, that they, they found that to be something that rang pretty true in their own minds, and mentoring programs, and finding ways to expand the number of mentors, not only for students, but I threw on the table, maybe we need some mentors for parents who need to learn how to be more actively engaged with what's going on with their kids. I was going to talk about ethics training, but we did all go through that, four hours, four hours of lawyers talking, I hope you're not offended, Mr. Martin.
I won't talk to him.
Ends to make it very difficult to sit still, but there was, there was some good information provided during that. And I too want to wish everybody a great Christmas and a happy and safe new year. And next year, we hope will be bigger and better and more productive for everybody that's involved in our school district. Attorney comments, Mr. Martin?
None this evening, thank you.
All right. Superintendent comments?
I have just a few. First, Mr. Martin reminded me, there, if indeed something changes after reviewing the application you postpone, it's possible that item could come back as good cause, just, if, if it stays the same, it would still be on the agenda, but it's possible it could be good cause. I would like to echo what several of the board members have said, that our community really, really needs to pay attention to legislative issues, and it's, it's easy to follow it online as it goes along, and I know we'll be talking about it at the table, but we, we need community support to make children a priority and make education the I would love to take credit for the decorations. It was a woman, it was Bobby Charwood who came in here and did all this, so I will be sure and convey your appreciation to her. Maybe I can get her to put the Christmas cards out next year. But I'll work on that. Also, I want to thank you for trusting staff on the, on the work that they do and taking the recommendations seriously, and know that much effort is put into the things that we bring to you. Nothing is, is done without great thought, and we are indeed doing the very best we can with the work that we do, and your support of the recommendations is evidence that you trust them, and that's important to them. I just want you to know that, and I appreciate it. I heard tonight, process improvement, I think this afternoon and tonight, process improvement, common vision that we can articulate no matter what our role in the system is, and holiday cards to be on display. So, I've made notes about all that. I've also heard a lot of holiday wishes, and I just want to remind any students that might be watching, any parents that might be watching, we still have a week and three days to go, and there's a lot of work to be done in that time, so have a great time starting next Saturday. But in the meantime, it's important to still be in school. And I couldn't, I, I was the principal at Cypress High, so that listening to them brought back some fun memories of principal life, but what really went through my mind the whole time they were up here and while the children were being awarded for their Christmas cards or their holiday cards, I really, really love children, and it was wonderful to see them here and for them to be able to share. I wish more of the community could see how wonderful our children really are, and how talented they are, and how much we want to promote how good they are. And so, I appreciate you all allowing us the opportunity to do some of that celebrating in the board meeting venue, because I think it's a good one to share with the community. Amity, our communications director, keeps telling us, we have to tell our story better. That is on us to tell our story better, and I think the, the public display of our children in, in all sorts of settings is a good one, and this is an especially important one, so thank you for allowing us to do that. And finally, I've been tweeting every day, well, I've been tweeting every day because they make me, but I've been tweeting every day this month, a thought about making December different. And so, that would be my wish for everyone, that somehow something different comes from this month, that you do something out of your comfort zone, something that might be kinder than you usually might want to be, something that makes a difference to someone else. So, I encourage everyone to do something to make December different before the month ends, and I remain grateful to serve as your superintendent. ends, and I remain grateful to serve as your superintendent. So thank you.
The next scheduled meetings of the board are January 14th, a 2:00 workshop, followed by the action meeting at 6:00. Having no other business to come before this body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting's adjourned.